Welcome ladies and gentlemen, it's Yemi Salz once again. And as you all know, like they always say in my language, Omothuri abati wakwudimba shenxe. It means, a child with a big illness is where they are just ahead. And right now, we are going to talk to my friend now in Hong Kong. Her name is Betty. She's going to tell us exactly what is going on in Hong Kong. So over to Betty now. Hello Betty, how are you?
Hi.
And how is, how is Hong Kong?
Uh, Hong Kong now is, uh, since twenty weeks, not twenty days, they've become normal now. With coronavirus, yeah. And Hong Kong, uh, before they never locked down. And everybody wore a mask here.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, uh, because, uh, before the government to ask to, to, uh, ordering to wear the mask. But Hong Kong people, they're very, very, they already stopped since government ordering. And, yeah.
But, um, okay.
You can see, it's, uh, Hong Kong, everybody is normal case in, uh, almost one month.
Okay.
So this is good news, right?
Okay, that is good. And despite the fact that you don't have any lockdown, how are you able to cope? You know, no lockdown, then how are you able to cope? How are you able to, like, survive? Is it not really affecting you guys? Because you are not on lockdown, but at the same time you are going about, then how are you able to contain, um, the Covid that did not spread? How were you able to do it?
Yeah, because, uh, you know, it's before coronavirus, Hong Kong people, they're all, when they get sick or feel unwell, they're already wearing masks.
Okay.
So when it's this, this, this is very big, uh, virus, and everybody is already, uh, wearing masks. And then clean their, uh, washing hands, it's already, it's a must to do. Very, very important when you wear a mask. This is the very important thing. Because they come from the people talking. When you speak, then you, you, you know, yeah. And then, yeah. So, so it's, it's not many cases actually. And every day is like, uh, ten, twenty, and then very, very long is thirty-nine. And, but now, now it's one month, almost, and twenty-three days. Now more case local people.
Okay, that is good.
Yeah. It's very, very good, yeah.
Is your government making any law? Like, any law, like, um, if you don't take, um, if you don't have social distance or anything? Is there any punishment for something like that? Or there's nothing like that? Because in some countries, they, they punish you if they catch you that you don't, um, obey the rules. Is it like that in Hong Kong?
Uh, no, they, they, uh, only, uh, distant, uh, they have the socialist. A socialist then is, uh, in tourist. Uh, government is, uh, they kind of gathering for more than four people. And then the bar costs, uh, the bar and coffee is cost, but the, uh, the shop and restaurant is open. So people she can go out, but it's like, uh, one, one, uh, how is, uh, five feet, uh, away from the people. From the, so she can four people, uh, gathering, that's it. And after, in tourist, after this, now they can be like, uh, eight people. Eight people, uh, can gathering with the eight people. In restaurant, open now, bar open, so everything is back to normal now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Then, um, it's, it's nice talking to you Betty, because I see they said in Hong Kong, everybody has to work and things are going back to normal. And really thank you for giving us this little time to, to talk to us about, about Covid nineteen. Thank you very much. Welcome back ladies and gentlemen. Um, as you all know, that was a short interview with a correspondent in Hong Kong. And as you all know, Hong Kong is a country in China. And China is, uh, presumably the country where the outbreak originated from. And, um, due to that, there was not even a lockdown in Hong Kong. Despite the fact that the outbreak came from somewhere around there. And, um, for a country that such an outbreak came from, this is what is exactly happening in the country, despite the fact that there was no lockdown. Welcome back. And here is a country where there was a lockdown and there was not an initial outbreak, only that people brought it into the country. And this is exactly how they are trying to control the outbreak in such a country. Thank you. And right now, um, to discuss this whole Covid nineteen issue, we have, as usual, our two eminent and amiable analysts. They are always there, all the time. And right now, we will go and invite our two gentlemen, Mr. Potato and Mr. Ayoko To. So we start with Mr. Potato. Good evening, Mr. Potato, how are you today?
It's my pleasure, Yemi. I'm happy to feed the spit of Bali all the way from Nigeria.
Ah. Okay. And, um, Mr. Ayoko To, how are you doing this evening?
I'm fine, Yemi. I think, uh, people, Nigerians are okay this evening like we Nigerians are. Though we are preparing for the coffee, any moment from now.
Okay.
It's gonna be a coffee in Nigeria.
Yeah, let's wait and see. Alright. So, um, like you all know, um, gentlemen, there's this outcry right now concerning this, um, new, um, Infectious Disease Control Bill 2020. And like you all know, people are saying there has been no public hearing concerning this bill. But like you will recollect, in 2018, the NCDC on their Twitter page, they advertised a public hearing concerning this bill. And, um, right now, everybody is now clamoring for a public hearing. But don't you think that the public hearing they had back in 2020 is enough justification to go ahead for, for a reading, the first and second reading, without necessarily making it go into a public hearing again this year? So, um, I will first go to Mr. Ayoko To to give us his own opinion about the whole issue. So, Mr. Ayoko To, what do you think about this whole thing? Please?
Thank you, thank you, Yemi. And, uh, I hope Nigerians are okay like I said earlier.
You are welcome, thank you.
Uh, we appreciate the, the, the comment from Hong Kong and where it emanated from.
Alright.
Now, the truth remains still that in Nigeria, the social media has gave a wrong impression about so many things as regarding issues affecting our nationals. Let me not deceive you, in Nigeria here, whenever there is an issue that is bothering, people can go back and bring an issue that is of similar consequence years ago and play it to represent what is transpiring. And which is why I will start from that video you have just shown of the, 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 the public, uh, the public hearing for the bill in 2018 by the NCDC. Let me clarify that the public hearing suggested by the NCDC in 2018 is an aftermath of what transpired after the Ebola crisis and people are trying to rearrange themselves. And that has not gone to an extent or level of pandemic as the case was then. But what transpired and what we are discussing today is the resurgence of that deal. You understand? Surraptitiously, on 28 April 2020, four months after the pandemic has ravaged the whole world and everybody is at a loss. And what we are discussing here today is not that in 2018, the NCDC has not made that, uh, that private public, uh, whatever hearing to discuss on the aftermath of Ebola. But the truth is that we are facing a pandemic which is called Covid nineteen in 2020. And three years after, we cannot use a public hearing of three years ago that deals on a different element to tackle what we have now. Now, let me state this fact for you. On April 28, you understand? When Nigerians are still on lockdown, the House, you understand, reconvened surreptitiously to first consider the, an eight hundred and fifty billion loan. That is an IMF loan requested by the federal government and approved it to tackle these Covid nineteen cases economically. But during that sitting, a bill was sponsored lonely by the Speaker of the House, Femi Bajapia Miller. You understand? On the old Quarantine Act, the 1929 Quarantine Act, you understand? Now renamed, you understand, into 2020 Control of Infectious Diseases Act. And on that day, it quickly passed through two different, I mean, two straight readings. Because even as at that day, the Speaker asked only one copy. It was only after, after the day, that after it has passed through, uh, through two, uh, readings, that the, uh, members of the House were now given the opportunity to be in possession of the document in its entirety. And what is the bill supposed to do for us going through that? The bill is seeking to replace the old Quarantine Act with a Control of Infectious Diseases Act. And it is meant to seek to replace, to repair the obsolete Quarantine Act of 1929 and enact the Control of Infectious Diseases Bill. Make provisions relating to quarantine and regulations for prevention and introduction into a spread of dangerous infectious diseases in Nigeria and for all other related matters. And if you look at it, eh, what is controversial is the rate at which it passed through two quick readings on the same day and some clauses that are there in. And let me not deceive you, two, three days after, a former senator of the Federal Republic sued, you understand, the National Assembly, you understand, I'm talking of Senator Dino Melayi. He sued the National Assembly, challenging the authority of the National Assembly to quickly pass that in. And he made us to realize that in finding that suit, that he declared that the provisions of sections, some sections, because in the, in, in that new Infectious Disease Control Bill, we have eighty-two new sections, you understand? That are not in the old Quarantine Act. And, uh, Dino Melayi and some other prominent Nigerians that have seen the, 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 you understand? The caprices involved in that act. They made us realize that that bill that is now being promoted and has passed through and is supposed to be passed now, is, there are, there are some provisions in section five, six, eight, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-nine, thirty, forty-four, forty-seven, and forty-nine of that new bill. That they are draconian, oppressive, and inconsistent with the sections thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty, forty-one of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria as amended. Because they brought from things that are not in conformity with the old Quarantine Act. And those things are those that Nigerians are clamoring for to know why as at this time, the National Assembly will reconvene to pass such a bill as at this critical time? A bill that is aimed at compulsory vaccination of all Nigerians empowering the NDCC and the President to make draconian laws that will affect the people. That is why it is controversial and if you can collect or make.
Mr. Ayoko To, I know if we give you the time, you will use the next one hour expatting on this, on this issue. We would like to go to Mr. Potato and hear his own view. So, I'm sorry for, for cutting you short, but with the way I see it, with, with the passion you are putting in and with that energy, I, I, I can, I can see you going on for the next two hours on this. But like, you know, we, we, we.
Let, let, let Mr. Potato give his own view.
Yeah.
Then maybe I can expatate further on the next question.
I have a question for you when it's done. Okay. Mr. Potato, can we please, um, hear your own, um, view please?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Potato.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Ayoko To on the other end. I think you have turned justice to this topic. The, the thing is, eh, the law, uh, is big. Today, the Quarantine Act of 1926. Every other law is to the extent of the law of, of the Federal Republic of Nigeria in consequential. Every other law that is played in Nigeria, that has not passed through the due process of the law, is not a void. As I speak today, the Infectious Disease Control Bill is not, uh, it's, it is against the spirit of the Federal, uh, of the law of the Federal Republic. The law seeks to vaccinate everyone by all means. Even if you are suspected, if you are not in contact, you must be vaccinated. It gives the power to the DG of NCDC. Imagine, somebody like Wike E. Zee, DG of NCDC, he will vaccinate the whole of Nigeria. It's, it gives individual apart from the due process of the law. It is absolute power to the DG of NCDC. Anybody can find himself in the position of the, of the DG NCDC. As speak today, the DG of NCDC boasts a dual citizenship. He's a citizen of Nigeria and a citizen of Germany. For example, Germany want to behave like China. And they want to eradicate the Nigerians. All they got to do is to group a law in their country to comport and force that agent to do the way of China in Nigeria. Anyway, put in a vaccine that may eradicate the next generation. The, why many of us are agitated? I can, I can show you that that, that bill will see. Aspect of that bill is what bothers all of us. We all know what the Nigerians are trying to do in the world. They are trying to limit the population of Africa. They are trying to reduce the population of Africa. This is by the fact that somebody bodies, dead bodies on the streets of Africa because of this, uh, the first slaughter of Africa, and that's from Madagaskar. I can tell you that we cannot trust this element, the way, because of the House of Representatives itself. Why not a member of the front, embrace this deal?
It seems they don't want Mr. Potato to talk on our show because the, the.
A little bit of difficulty.
Yeah, the, the, we are, we are, ladies and gentlemen, we are having a little bit of technical difficulties with Mr. Potato's line.
It happens a lot.
It, it happens a lot, so try and forgive us because it keeps going on enough, keeps going on enough. Please try and forgive us.
But I think we have him now.
Um, Mr. Potato, are, are you, are you still there? Because.
Very well.
Okay. Can, can you please, um, speak louder? Because it seems you're having this problem with, um, the, the connection. You know, typical, um, you know, we will not imagine that.
It's only typical of Nigeria network. I'm from fighting network, uh, 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 we, we'll do better. But what I'm telling you is, there are a lot of things that are suspicious about that bill.
Right.
Like, the, the sponsor, the sponsor, this is the Speaker of the House of Representatives himself on a, the, 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 sponsoring a bill. Why not, let's say, go to the Speaker? Who wants to get, eh, the treatment that was given to that, eh, unknown senator? That for like six months was sustained in the, in the feeling. Nobody was, the Speaker of, of the, of the, of the Senate. The, the President of the Senate. So what we are saying is, all the suspicions may not be right. So, as, as I speak today, Nigeria is against that bill. The bill is deadly, it is self-serving, and it's serving the masters or the pay, the, the pay masters of the sponsor of that bill. Thank you.
You are welcome. And, um, Mr. Ghana has, um, some questions for you, um, gentlemen. So go ahead and ask your question.
Gentlemen, can you hear me please?
Yeah, loud, loud and clear.
Okay, so for our viewers' sake, uh, just in case, um, can you guys elaborate a little bit details about the bill? And I also want to tell, I want, I want you guys to tell our viewer why it's so important for a public hearing before such an, a bill is passed?
Yes, thank you, this is democracy.
Right.
The people we have in the legislation, they are representative of the people. Now, when they are there, they are not island of knowledge, they are not the source of knowledge.
Alright.
Every, every little thing they make there has a direct and remote impact on all three members of society. That is why people, when they do their best in the debate, in the favor, in the other favor of National Assembly, they still have to bring it to the community. If they are susceptible to us, the people should have an input. Now we are talking of democracy. The way democracy is, is described is to govern for the people by the people and for the people. Somebody cannot sit in Abuja and make a law that governs another, in, 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 for her court. Somebody cannot sit in Abuja and make a law that governs political, in your state. You cannot sit in Abuja and even talk of what happened in Lupe in, in that Abuja, you can't do everywhere. Let the people feel the law. Let them have an input. Let them help you to make it more robust. Let them feel if they can afford it, if it is sustainable. Let the people have an input, that is how the laws are made. Laws are made for men and not just for two. In coffee, if, if the people, if we allow us, we are stated that members of the government who don't make the law and pass it all by themselves. It is as good as, now you know that, our legislature is an extension of the executive. It is as good as Mr. Bwari making the law for all of us. Then they will tell us they are doing school feeling every time, even during holiday, there will be school feeling. Because the law says, uh, school feeling throughout the year. But, but now people can say, no, 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 Mr. Senator, we don't want this in our area, this is what we want. That is, that's how to make laws. That is where the law will have human face. That is where everybody will submit to the law. Their enforcement becomes easier. When the law is generic, is coming from the people. When the law is people-based, then the people will not have any difficulty in following such law, in obeying such law. So it's just a law, it's just a law that must be here, that must be public hearing, that must be constitution of some ethnic nationalities, some interests within the society. Then, eh, we can make a law that will work for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, gentlemen, we will now go on a short break and we'll be back. Welcome back ladies and gentlemen and our viewers. Um, like you all know, we still have Mr. Ghana around and he's still going on with his questions. I wonder which day Mr. Ghana will be tired of asking our analysts our questions. But so, but to cut a long story short, please go ahead and answer your question.
So, uh, Mr. Ayoko To, uh, the House of Reps are accused of allegedly collecting a ten million dollar bribe. Um, how true or false is this?
Thank you very much, Mr. Ghana. Let me state clearly, yeah, that the desperation of the, it is, in fact, let me state clear that it is not the House of Reps alone. It is the entirety of the National Assembly that is accused of collecting that ten million bribe from the people. Because aftermath of the April 28, eh, National, eh, House of Reps, eh, passing of, eh, the, the bill, on May 5th, the Senate reintroduced the bill under a different title, called National Health Emergency Bill of 2020. And is sponsored by the Chairman Senate Committee on Primary Health Care and Communicable Diseases, Senator Chukuka Utazi. And that is to justify the draconian laws that are inherent in this new bill. Why are they seriously interested in passing this bill? One, this bill will mandate them to compulsory vaccinate everybody in the country. And two, like, the, the Speaker is trying to justify that, eh, every state country have yellow card. If you go outside or come inside, you must have the yellow card, which must show that you have been vaccinated one way or the other, and immunization was compulsory for all. But the truth remains that this 2020 Infectious Diseases Bill has issues that are controversial because the bill gate was purportedly set to be sponsoring vaccination of the whole world on a different, you understand, conspiracy theory to bring in whatever they call diseases, whatever it is called. But what I'm saying here is that for the National Assembly, both the House of Reps and the Senate, to be insisted on passing this bill without going through the necessary public hearing to each and everyone think about all the clauses in the bill is criminal, is conspiratorial, and is dictatorial. And I must, I, I will just tell you one or two of the bills. The old quarantine, of the, of the clauses, the old Quarantine Act stated that there should be a penalty of five hundred naira for the voter. That is somebody who refuses to be vaccinated, you understand? But this new bill is suggesting between two hundred thousand and five, five million naira and forcing a jail act for anybody that defected. At a time when they are telling you that they are giving your children food at home and they are not going to school. So if the government made this bill now compulsory, meaning everybody will be forced to vaccinate themselves and this vaccination can spare room for us because it may be truly the, that the ten million dollars that they have alleged to collected is working. See some other things there. The NDCC, the DG shall be responsible for their action, appoint any public official or employee of, of a prescribed institution to be an health officer. Meaning, anybody can be, I mean, approved to take care of our case. And the President in this case can order a public health emergency if he is satisfied that there is an outbreak. And if there is such an outbreak, that means public buildings, public institutions, and houses of people that are not even in conformity with governments can be quarantined and forced and made isolation centers. And these things have not gone and passed through all the normal processes they should pass through.
Um, Mr. Ayoko To, Mr. Ayoko To.
It is a threat to women rights and abuse of power. If this law, this bill is passed into law, thank you, Yemi.
Yeah, thank you. And, um, Mr. Potato, what do you, what do you have to say on this? Because your view too is really, really important.
Let me just say that on this program, we must talk about facts.
Okay.
Because fact is sacred, is sacred. I will tell you that the ten million dollars that is on the table is an allegation and it remains on the table of speculation in the era of rumor for now.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing is standing as evidence that, eh, that, eh, seventeen, seventeen. But, eh, the way and manner the bill is coming suggests that there are some other things that, eh, are necessary, necessary that be, eh, apart from.
Exactly my point. Now, this, that is my point.
This is a bill that has been traced to, to have been copied full scale from a bill in Singapore. Singapore is not Nigeria. We have seen more than one bill now that has been copied letter for letter, one to one, from Singapore.
Yeah.
Singapore is not Nigeria. That we have something that is own, own developed, that is made in Nigeria. These are areas that, eh, Nigeria, Nigerians are being skepticism about this bill. Now, this bill is supposed to be like a response to the correct challenges of the country. But I want to tell you that Covid nineteen is not as deadly as HIV. Covid nineteen is not as deadly as Wuhan Covid. Covid nineteen is not as bad as malaria, it can not kill more people as malaria.
No.
Covid nineteen has not killed people like Nigerian police force. Why the obvious.
Allegedly.
Why it was a threat to you to send only one copy of a bill and bring it to a House of Representatives, fifty members? And you insist that it's not.
And you insist that it must be passed? And it went to first maybe with the second bill? It is, it was not even the other of the House for that day. And you choose your own office as the Speaker of the House to present it. Then there is something rude about it.
I I even I even heard that when they were even um about, I mean, the Speaker even said. They had no draft. None of the lawmakers had a draft.
That's what I'm saying. No, you came with the only copy of.
It was only one copy. There there was no draft. They had no draft. So they were even reading. They were even reading.
We we should have the.
I mean, it's, I mean, I I don't know. I'm just like.
It's out the day past.
Speechless about your thing. Because I I I I don't know how you want to like read a bill. Without have without the other lawmakers having the draft, a copy of it. So where are they reading it from?
Yemi, in Nigeria here, we have this culture. Even if people are being screamed to become ministers or anything. If they have been Senator or House of Rep members before, they will tend them to take a bow. So if a speaker is not sponsoring a bill, what they do is that they ensure that the first and the second reading pass through. Without them going through the document. It was an aftermath of public opproprium. It is the bill and the necessity, you understand, to physically, you understand, fact, the content of the bill. That is necessitating these questions that we are asking. And they must ensure that it's done. Well, at least we should not spend so much energy on this. Because the National Assembly is not the the last home in this case. It has to go through the National Assembly, State House of Assembly. And I can assure you that eh we will personally see our House, uh uh House of Assembly members that we. That we eh allow this bill to sit through. And Nigerians will discipline them. It is it cannot stand. It must not stand. This is taking us back to the era of Smith Jay. There's something we call it Genesis. These people, they want to preserve a particular risk while they eliminate the rest. In fact, one of my. Eh, Mr. Potato, one of one of the clauses is that there is an exemption from vaccination. That may be granted where there is a valid medical reason. Meaning, the President, the DG of the NCDC can ameliorate and alleviate a particular race or tribe from being vaccinated. While others may be subjected to compulsory vaccination.
Just like in animal farm, some animals are more equal than some.
Yeah, some animals are equal because some are more equal than others.
Yeah, George will.
And we are not in animal farm. So this must not stand. It must go through public scrutiny. Because it is a threat to lack of public scrutiny. It is ambiguous and lack eh clarity. And it has inter-agency conflict and judicial rivalries with the existing order. And can you just pass what you be? And you want us to clap for you just because you are trying to prevent a pandemic? That is already within us and that you are not doing anything to prevent. That is just my point. I'm sorry if I'm being sarcastic.
Okay, alright. Okay, thank you.